The Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council welcome you to the Avondale City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items listed on the agenda or under unscheduled public appearance should complete the Request to Speak form online at www.avondaleaz.gov slash Request to Speak, or complete a blue card that is located at the back of the council chamber and hand it to the city clerk prior to consideration of that agenda item. When your name is called, please approach the podium and give your name for the public record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If more than five requests to speak are received, comments may be limited to one minute. A countdown clock will be easily visible on the speaker's podium. If your comments concern an item not listed on the agenda, Arizona Open Meeting Law restricts mayor and council actions. If your comments concern an item that is not listed on the agenda, mayor and council may respond to criticism, request that staff review the matter, or request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Thank you for your interest in the Avondale City Council Meeting.
Good evening, and thank you all for, actually, at this moment in time, I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of August, October 6, 2025. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Condi?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Solorio?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Mayor Pineta?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Nielsen has an excused absence tonight.
Thank you so much. Ron, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Up next is, we're going to hear from Keith, our Assistant Director of Finance and Budget, to introduce two new employees.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Keith Falstrom, I'm the Assistant Director of Finance and Budget. I'm here to introduce two new employees for us. First is Greg Litchi. He is our new budget manager. He worked for the City of Avondale for about 10 years in accounting. He left for three years to the City of Buckeye, and then we got him back. So we're happy to have him here. And then next is Luisa Portilla. She is a Senior Customer Service Representative, helping our utility customers, and she came from Arizona Water Company, where she had 18 years of experience. So we're excited to have her here. She started about two months ago.
Interesting. Well, welcome to the team. Seeing as that our list is a little shorter this evening, just quickly, you've served here before, you are back. What is something that you've noticed, being back the second time around, that maybe wasn't around back then, or something that you've recognized, noticed?
Honestly, Mayor, I really miss the culture here. I think we had a really good culture for the employees, and it's been, it's just great to be back.
Well, thank you so much for being here and choosing us once again. Appreciate you being here. And only two months that you've been here, but what is something that you've come to realize, being a part of the Avondale team?
I think everybody just helping each other, and being nice, and just teamwork. There's a lot of good teamwork here.
I like that teamwork. Well, thanks again for being a part of Avondale, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, up next is Ted, your Chief Information Officer, to introduce two new employees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce two new employees for IT. First, we have Michael Jocelyn. He's joined the city, he's been here two weeks. So he joined us as a GIS technician. So Michael comes to us from the City of Yuma. He's been there two and a half years. And he was there, he helped map water and wastewater assets, and assisted in their asset management. And he's worked on other GIS projects with Southern California Edison, PG&E, and Washington State Department of Transportation. And Michael is a US States Navy veteran and a graduate of University of Arizona.
Nice.
And Pranith Mari joins us as a network analyst. And Pranith comes to us with eight years of experience doing network engineering. Where he supported large-scale infrastructure focused on reliability, scalability, and security. He's been with us about five months as a contractor prior to joining us as an employee, and he's contributed to key infrastructure projects such as installing new network equipment at traffic signals and intersections, and working closely with the Public Works and Traffic Teams. So we're looking forward to everything he can do for us as well.
So same question for both of you. Give us one fun fact about yourselves that you'd like to share that was not provided to us by Jeff.
Well, nothing really, I just like, you know, like going hiking with my dog on the weekend, stuff like that.
Any specific area of town that you like to go?
Well, I just moved here, so I've been out to White Plains last weekend.
Don't forget about the Astreas, as well as Monument Hill. And Pranith, the same question for you.
One fact, one fun fact is, I like to go hiking, and I guess I'm in the right spot.
Okay, well, he can maybe share with you some good spots, and maybe you guys can go together. Thank you for being here, and more importantly, thank you for joining the Avondale team. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Next up, Mayor, is our Marketing and Public Relations Director, Pierre. Not introducing a new employee, but celebrating an internal promotion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and it's my pleasure to introduce Gabby Babinski, our new Management Analyst for the Marketing and PR Department. And as Ron mentioned, she is not new to the city. Prior to transferring to the NPR team, Gabby spent three years with the Office of Public Safety, where she created programs such as the Avondale Fire and Medical Citizen Academy and Camp Hero, which is an innovative program designed to introduce high school girls to the fire service. Gabby was also a driving force behind the development of the Avondale One Campaign, our fentanyl prevention program. Gabby has a master's degree in business from Embry-Riddle and holds Advanced PIO certification. Before starting with the city, she worked in various sectors, including tribal government, college athletics, and health clinics. And in her new role with NPR, she will help to manage the 100-plus projects that we have on our list at any given time, help with administrative support, manage the gift shop at the Visitor and Conference Center, as well as provide social media and marketing training to our teams. And she will support the critical public information and emergency communications functions here in the city. And I know you always ask for the fun fact, so we'll get ahead of that. She plays semi-pro volleyball, and she often gets mistaken for a firefighter in the city. And yes, she's actually driven a fire truck.
So Gabby can, first of all, welcome internally to the team. I mean, it's a, it's an easy jump for you, I'm sure, not only logistically, but obviously a lot of what you were doing with public safety translates well to marketing for many reasons. And I know that many of us up here have worked with you and have seen the wonderful work that you've done. But personally, I know that you mentioned semi-pro volleyball. Did you play in college? And I think I've asked you that question before, but let's, I would look for all of us to hear the answer to that.
I did play in college, and I coached for a second, too, so.
That's right, and you coached. So what can you say correlates between team sports and working with the City of Avondale?
I would say, especially with the marketing department, it's very collaborative. So that teamwork, I've really brought into this role so far. So it was a pretty easy transition with this team, especially because women's sports, now I'm on an all-women's team, it's a little bit back to my roots, so.
Well, thank you again for being here. We're glad that we didn't lose you to somewhere else, and more importantly, that you'll be helping with the marketing team. And I know that your skill set and your experience will do well here, and we just can't thank you enough. So thank you so much, and congrats on the promotion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, next item?
Mr. Mayor and Council, up next is, we're going to have our proclamation on Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Ted Flores, your Assistant HR Director, will kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed cancer for women in the United States, and remains the second-leading cause of cancer deaths. During October, the city recognizes the extraordinary strength of individuals diagnosed with breast cancer and the commitment and effort invested in finding a cure. At this time, I would like to welcome those in attendance who have been impacted by breast cancer to stand to be acknowledged. At this time, I would like to turn it over to, back to the mayor, to read the proclamation.
But one that takes on family and friends and all those. And Liz, I'm so glad that you're here, and I know every time we go to your office and you see the Wonder Woman sticker, that it means more than just a figurine, that it represents the fight that has been put up against this nasty disease. And so I hate to put the spotlight on you, but I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that. Okay. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second-leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas mammography, an X-ray of the breast, is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment are believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. And whereas during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors, and that gives us hope of a better future. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Avondale City Council, the City of Avondale, Arizona, hereby proclaims October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. Thank you. Ron, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, up next, we have a proclamation honoring the life of Ron Ross, a longtime Avondale resident. I would like to invite our friend and our former mayor, Ken Weiss, to introduce the family.
Mayor, Councilmembers, good seeing you all again. You're going to hear a proclamation that tells a brief story of the Ross family, not just Ron Ross, but Guadalupe Ross, the family there, a longtime residence of Avondale. I first got to know Ron Ross five years ago, when city leadership in Avondale, city council and myself worked with the governor's office to keep open the American Legion in Avondale. Ron Ross was a driving force in that. For those of you who knew Ron, you know that he was incredibly persuasive. Some might say irritating, but incredibly persuasive. We were able to keep the American Legion open and keep those veterans going to a place that they love, and a place where their friends and family were at, or else they'd be at home by themselves during the greatest pandemic that this nation has seen in 100 years. At that time, I got to know Ron, and in the next couple of years, I got to know Guadalupe. And we would sit and talk, and he would tell me stories of Avondale. And that inspired me to reach out to Mayor Pineta and Councilmember Weiss and see if we could do a proclamation for them. Mayor, when you're done with the proclamation, if you wouldn't mind giving Guadalupe about three minutes, just to kind of tell the story of the Ross family to put things more in perspective.
Of course. Okay, I'd like to read the proclamation now. Whereas Ronald Raymond Ross was born on August 8, 1949, in Phoenix, Arizona, and passed away peacefully at his home on June 8, 2025, at the age of 75. And whereas Ron was a lifelong Arizonan who grew up in Avondale and Yuma, graduated from Kofa High School in 1967, before proudly serving his country in the United States Army from 1969 to 1971, where he was honorably discharged. And whereas following his military service, Ron built a successful career as an insurance agent, earning numerous accolades and was admired for his professionalism, integrity, and strong work ethic, work ethic. And whereas Ron devoted much of his life to public service and community involvement, contributing his time and talents to the Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Committee, the Tri-City West Chamber of Commerce, and the Billy Moore Days Committee. And whereas as a proud member of the American Legion Post 61 in Avondale, Ron held many leadership positions, including commander, for five years, where he supported veterans and strengthened community ties. And whereas Ron will be remembered as a devoted husband, father, grandfather, brother, and friend, whose compassion, dedication, and service left a lasting impact on the City of Avondale and all who had the privilege of knowing him. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Avondale City Council, the City of Avondale, Arizona, do hereby honor and celebrate the life and legacy of Ronald Raymond Ross, and extend our deepest condolences to his family, along with our gratitude for his service and lasting contributions to our community. Thank you so much.
Mayor Pineta, City Council, thank you so much for this. Yes, Ron did work hard and did a lot for the City of Avondale, and not only for the city, but the community. Anyway, around 1920, my grandparents moved to Avondale. They purchased the land that Billy Moore owned there on Eighth Street and Riley, and that's where the history started from there. My grandfather became the third mayor of Avondale, he served on the first city council. My Uncle Frank was the city attorney for many, many years. My mom worked as the city clerk. I was the building inspector for 19 years here in the city. Then, I kind of forget what I was going to say.
It's okay, you're doing well.
But yeah, we enjoyed our time here. When we moved, my dad took a job in the White Wing Ranch in Dayton, Arizona. We did come back for Little League, as my brother Ron and Larry played Little League in Avondale. My dad didn't want us to lose the connection here. Therefore, when we moved back to Avondale, we practically knew everybody. Ron was a great supporter of all the activities and things that went on. He worked at the Billy Moore Days for 25 years as the chairman, so we have a long history there. This is his son, Kyle, and we just want to make sure that we appreciate what you've done for Ron. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Guadalupe. We appreciate that, and thank you so much, Mayor Weiss, for bringing this to our attention and honoring Ron in that way.
Mr. Mayor, if the family and the former mayor wanted a picture with council, we'll do that after this next proclamation or this next speaker.
Thank you so much. Okay.
So Mr. Mayor and Council, up next is our Exceptional Student of Avondale Recognition, our Abby Star Student Award, and I believe Donna, yep, will be making the presentation to recognize that the children in our community are students.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's always a pleasure to come before you to recognize these wonderful and beautiful students and things that they are doing here in the Avondale community. I have Mariela Gonzalez, Youth and Community Engagement Coordinator, here with me, that will be translating in Spanish this evening. Students, as I call your name, please approach the podium to accept your award, and then you're welcome to take a seat. The first student that I would like to recognize is within the Avondale Elementary School District. Her name is Arleth Salea Luhan. Arleth attends Elysio C. Felix and is a fourth grader. Arleth consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic by giving her best effort in everything she does and never gives up. She works very hard in class to achieve her academic goals and takes great pride in her progress. She also shows commitment to her attendance goals, making it a priority to be at school every day and ready to learn. Her kindness and loving nature shines through in a way that she treats all of her classmates and teachers with respect and care. Arleth is also a great team player, always willing to collaborate, share ideas, and celebrate other successes. Arleth's positive attitude and dedication make her a valued member of the school community.
So aquí tenemos a Arleth. Arleth muestra constantemente una fuerte ética de trabajo al dar su mejor esfuerzo en todo lo que hace y nunca se rinde. Trabaja duro en su clase para lograr sus metas académicas y se siente orgullosa de su progreso. También muestra compromiso con sus objetivos de asistencia, dando prioridad a estar en la escuela todos los días y lista para aprender. Su amabilidad y naturaleza cariñosa brían en la forma en que trata a sus compañeros y maestros con respeto y cuidado. Arleth también es una excelente compañera de equipo, siempre dispuesta a colaborar, compartir ideas, y celebrar los éxitos de los demás. Se esfuerza por ser servicial, ya sea asistiendo a un compañero que necesite apoyo o en echando una mano en la clase. La actitud positiva y dedicación de Arleth la ha convertido en un miembro valioso de nuestra comunidad escolar.
The next student is within the Pendergast Elementary School District and attends Rio Vista Elementary, Giselle Rico Yurida. She is an eighth grader. Giselle is truly a remarkable student, whose leadership, dedication, and passion have left a lasting impact on Elysio C. Felix. Giselle is a change-maker and a role model and a voice for others. She serves as the Chief Science Officer. She has championed innovation and brought STEM to life, not just in the classroom, but across the campus. She is a member of the Superintendent's Student Council. Giselle has demonstrated thoughtful leadership and advocacy. As a proud member of the National Junior Honor Society, she has exemplified the pillars of scholarship, service, leadership, character, and citizenship. Whether volunteering time, mentorship to others, or maintaining academic excellence, Giselle continues to rise to every challenge with humility and with heart.
Aquí tenemos a Giselle. Giselle es una estudiante verdaderamente extraordinaria. Su liderazgo, dedicación, y pasión ha dejado un impacto duradero en Elysio C. Felix. Giselle es una agente de cambio, un modelo a seguir, y una voz para los demás. Como oficial principal de ciencia, ha promovido la innovación y ha dado vida a STEM, no solo en su clase, sino en todo el campus. Es miembro del Superintendent's Students Council donde Giselle ha demostrado liderazgo y apoyo. Como orgullosa miembro de National Junior Honor Society, ha ejemplificado los pilares de beca, servicio, liderazgo, carácter, y ciudadanía. Ya sea ofreciendo su tiempo como voluntaria, mentorando a otros, o manteniendo la excelencia académica. Giselle continúa enfrentando cada desafío con humildad y corazón.
This next wonderful student is within the Tolleson Union High School District and attends West Point High School. Victoria Trulock is a 12th grader. Victoria is a dedicated student-athlete leader and a scholar who gives her best in everything she does. Victoria has excelled in track and field and girls' volleyball. She has placed in district competitions, served as varsity volleyball captain as a junior. Victoria has been active in National Honor Society, Black Student Union, and Psychology Club, where she serves as a secretary and was a founding member of the club. As a president of the Civic Action Club, she has led efforts to strengthen civic engagement on campus. She focused on making civic engagement meaningful across her peers and her school. She organized a visit with Anna Tovar, a respected public servant, whose story of resilience and dedication to community has inspired students across the campus. Victoria took the lead in creating a space for dialogue, encouraging her classmates to ask questions and see themselves as change-makers. She continues to build on that momentum by planning voter registration drives to help students to take steps towards becoming active in participating in democracy. And I just want to commend and applaud these students for all of the wonderful things that you're doing here in the Avondale community, and thank all of the teachers and school administrators that are here this evening, and families and friends to support these students. So thank you for pouring into them.
Thank you so much, Donna and Mariela. Are there any members of council that would like to share any words? Okay. We're just, I say this all the time, but again, I know that you students work hard and will work hard regardless of awards and recognition, and it sounds like we've got some real leaders here. And so hopefully you'll come back here to Avondale and share with us, you know, your expertise and your leadership skills, and maybe even serve here on council one day. So keep it up, keep up the good work, and thank you for making Avondale proud. We appreciate you all. Thank you. And if council wouldn't mind, we'll head down, and we will take some pictures with all of the awardees tonight. And if council wouldn't mind, we'll head down and we will take some pictures with all of the awardees tonight. Okay, we're going to move on. We're at item three, unscheduled public appearances. We do have one card. Julie, is there any others aside from this one?
Thank you, mayor. That is our only request to speak tonight.
Okay, if I can ask Stephen Alt to come to the microphone, please.
Mayor, council members, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Stephen Alt. I'm the president of Avondale Police Department United. We're currently eighty-two members and we're growing every week. Tonight, I'm here to represent the members and my friends that are sitting behind me and the friends that couldn't make it here, to send you a message of gratitude and a message of thank you. As super chief over here, instilled in me, going from good to great is about getting the right people on your bus. And myself and my friends behind me, we're passengers on this bus. Now Chief Memo over here, he's sitting at the door checking tickets. City manager here, he's driving this thing and he's driving it great. But it is you all that have designed this bus, okay? And in recent years, when retention and recruitment has been extremely difficult when it comes to law enforcement, it is through the compensation and benefits packages that you guys have presented us to make us the cutting edge and the leading law enforcement agency. I want to share an example of your officers in action. Last week, they investigated a traffic fatality where a twenty-one-year-old United States Air Force service member lost his life, left behind a twenty-year-old wife and a two-month-old baby. Not only did our officers respond and handle that accident professionally, they continued to serve with honor when they went and did the death notification. And they not only continued to stay there when she had to do the unthinkable and tell his parents and her parents. What I didn't tell you about this story is he was traveling to the BioLife Plasma Donation Center to make $200 to pay their cell bill. From contributions from this association and out of our own pocketbooks, within less than twenty-four hours, we were able to present to her almost $1,700 to lessen the financial burden when the Air Force was still making arrangements. These are the compassionate officers that work for this department. These are the officers that serve with excellence. Now, at the end of this meeting, you guys are going to vote on further compensation. Things that are going to make it so our retention and our recruitment stay. So, our turnover, which is now at an all-time low, remains that way because of the culture that the Avondale Police Department has. What I ask you to do is transport yourself from these council chambers to the lobby of a discount tire shop. As you walk in that tire shop, you're going to walk up to a sign that says, "These are the good ones." As you move closer to the counter to make your selection, you're going to pass another sign that says, "These are the better ones." As you get really close to make your selection, you're going to stand next to the last sign that says, "These are the best ones." We thank you for your continued support, the ability to make us the best ones, to serve the citizens of Avondale. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I did it before the buzzer ended, so.
Thank you so much. Ron, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, I believe next item will be our consent agenda for consideration.
Are there any members of council who wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, we have a motion from Councilmember White, a second from Councilmember Weiss. Please vote. Okay, item passes. Thank you so much. Ron, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I have the honor, the privilege of introducing our economic development director to talk about a very exciting project coming to the city of Avondale that, just to be clear, would not have happened without the work of Jen, Cheryl and her team. So, without going too far off topic, let me just start with a big thank you. Anna Pigsooey, I mean, a good job to the team.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. So, I'm excited to present tonight the evolution and the journey of the Boulevard, which actually sounds like a movie documentary name. So, if it was a movie, it would be a blockbuster because there have been so many successes along the way and really exciting things ahead that we're going to talk about tonight. But first, it started with council. Council had a long-range vision of creating a vibrant, dynamic, mixed-use destination with a strategic approach of the work, live and play concept. It also serves the Boulevard as a tourism gateway as we welcome a number of tourists every day that come into Avondale for various events, whether it be NASCAR in a few weeks, American Sports Center. There's a lot of tourism activity in addition to community gathering at the Boulevard. But the transformation of the Boulevard did not, it does not happen overnight. So, if we look back through the last couple or ten, seventeen, twenty years, it has actually been a result of very strong collaboration, a solid vision and strategic investments. All right. So, with that, let's talk about what we've seen in the past, kind of a look backwards. We're also going to see where we're currently at and then we're going to talk about where we're heading. So, the history of the Boulevard. It was conceptualized in 2007, originally called the City Center as a multi-use, walkable, pedestrian-oriented, connected city center. It initially included more than 400 acres of land along Avondale Boulevard between I-10 and Van Buren. And Avondale City Council vision included retail restaurants and mixed-use development. In 2018, the city center was changed and officially dubbed the Boulevard. The district was reduced to 356 acres of land to create a more impactful area broken up into six sub-districts. Since the conception of this area, oh, sorry, we welcomed four hotel developments, four multifamily housing developments and more than twenty retail and restaurant establishments. All right, so communities thrive best when they feel connected. So, this is a flashback of the original vision of the Boulevard by Norris' design that really reflects that walkability and integration of all the parcels. And it creates sustainable development over time. And you can see our city-owned assets, how they integrate with the other private-public partnerships. All right, current vision of Boulevard. So, I want to highlight for a moment a couple key strategic parcels that reside outside of the black line, which is the Boulevard boundaries. Just to kind of give a little emphasis on some of those parcels are economic drivers for the Boulevard and will help with this continued success. The first is the Avondale Tech Center, which is directly west. And it's on the blue, top blue on the north side. This is a huge job creator with advanced technology in manufacturing and high-tech industries, state-of-the-art. So, one day we can have jobs for Giselle and Victoria and the students you saw earlier. We would love to keep these jobs in our city and give them opportunities. Just south of there is Fuse 623, again, density that is going to support the Boulevard amenities. And then we have Future Commercial, the yellow right below on the southern side. Across the street where it says Future Commercial, on the south side of Van Buren, which is in the Boulevard boundaries, that is a medical office complex that we're currently working with. And it is going to offer a gastro surgery center. If you move now a little bit north to the Boulevard Village Shopping Center, we are very excited about this opportunity. And I did get permission from the developer who has this land under contract. It is Peterson Group. So, Peterson Group, we're working with on a really cool retail commercial development. They are known for their development at the Promenade at Scottsdale and Franklin Wright and recently Trailhead at Eighty-Thirty and Happy Valley. And then north, the Avondale Lifestyle Center, we're working on a cool outdoor-indoor recreational entertainment. So, there's a lot of activity on that side. And then, of course, when you now move on the east side of Avondale, the green you see, and we're going to talk about that in greater detail, is the city-owned assets. And then we have Future Commercial on the north and an Avondale Business Innovation Park that we're also working or having, putting that in motion. So, a lot you can see of activity currently occurring in the Boulevard. But we want to take a look back and this is a really good reflection of all the successes and milestones along the way. So, from 2006 to 2009, the Hilton Garden Inn in Homewood Suites by Hilton constructed just south of I-10 opened. In 2007, city staff worked with consultant groups to design the implementation strategy for the area. And then in 2008, the city center's specific plan was adopted. Between 2010 and 2015, we welcomed American Sports Center and a retail liner to complement it in 2011. In 2012, Culver's Drive-Thru Restaurant Pad was developed. And in 14, the Park and Ride Transit Center was completed east of Avondale on Roosevelt. 2016 to '20, we adopted a new specific plan area called the Boulevard. 2019, the city of Avondale purchased several parcels of land in the Park Avenue District. In 2019, Residence Inn by Marriott opened. And in '20, council approved a land sale of four acres in the Boulevard, which is the retail line of shops, which is just directly south of American Sports. And I'm looking at Cheryl as a phone or friend. East, west, excuse me. And so, we're going to be looking at a new restaurant and bakery and some other amenities coming to that development. My Place Hotel opened in 2020. City Council approved a $5 million investment to create the Boulevard Lake and amenities, which is a really important investment because tonight you're going to see how that is going to be integrated into our new projects. And in 2020, Phoenix Children's Sports Therapy opened. Oh, and the list continues. 2021 to '25, the Boulevard Lake opened, as well as Lamb's Market, Dutch Bros'. Boulevard Parking Garage was completed, which is a tremendous asset in the Boulevard, as well as Tap Two. And then in 2023, New Penny Cafe opened, Soda Bomb, which is now Ivory House. And then Avita Institute opened, Starbucks opened, The Village at the Boulevard opened. And then in 2024, a new great amenity, which is a huge, huge draw, is the sand volleyball courts in 2024, as well as Alta Avondale Open, giving us some good density to support the area. So, the request for proposal that we recently issued was really designed to solicit proposal ideas from developers to make sure that we find partners in alignment with our vision. So, we get one chance to do this right. One chance to make sure that we deliver something intentional and meaningful because this is kind of the last pieces as we look at the build-out for the Boulevard. So, it was important that we engage with partners who have executed successful projects before. So, they're well-experienced and well-capitalized to take our vision and make it a reality. So, with that, we attracted a creative and innovative developers, which I'll introduce. I have right behind me. And just from a date perspective, we opened it on February 2025 and closed it in April. And as I mentioned, as we delve into the build-out, we always say in economic development, we're building for the generations, not just today, but for the times. So, here comes the next, the next build-out. So, in purple, we have Blueprints Capital. So, Norm Brody, can you wave your hand right behind me? Norm is the project developer who we are working with on that south side, so the hard corner at Van Buren and Avondale in purple, as well as the amenities around the lake. So, you see office space, great lawn. I'll get into more details with that. And then the two acres in front of American Sports Center as well. So, we're working with Norm on a great, unique project for these three parcels. Then I have behind me Tim and Ty Witten. You can wave, stand. They're our development partner for the Embassy Suites Full Service Hotel and Conference Center, which is on the north side next to our parking garage off of Roosevelt Street. All right. So, now I'm going to focus on Blueprints Capital for this presentation because there is another presentation following that we'll get into this deal structure and details for the Embassy Suites and Witten Development. So, Blueprints Capital, right away, we saw we had a shared vision with them because they did a really good job at Verdi at Cooley in Gilbert, at Cooley Station, that really takes an integrated, mixed-use approach with not only connectivity but activation of the common areas or the grass areas. They do a really good job of programming their space to attract the community to enjoy the asset. So, they have quality restaurants and retail and you just feel like you're, when you go there, you don't have, you can walk. You don't have to move your car. You can do a lot of different things at one time and feel like you're entrenched in the community. So, that is something that really, for us, resonated. And Blueprint specializes in that. And so, once we saw their amazing project, we are definitely looking forward to what they can bring to Avondale, which you can see on the right side picture is the conceptual design. So, as we begin preliminary discussions with Blueprint's Capital, they're looking at bringing about 138,000 square feet of retail restaurant and office space to the Boulevard. And it's broken down in the, and again, these are preliminary because as we get in and we start discussing and talking and seeing tenant interest, things might fluctuate, but this is what we're originally, or what we're looking at at this time. Okay. So, with a public-private partnership, there's contributions and development opportunities for each side. So, looking at the estimated city contribution, and I really want to emphasize estimate because we just started those discussions, is reimbursement of infrastructure. We have to build out some of the roads to connect these, the development space. And so, Blueprint's Capital will construct public improvements and the city of Avondale would reimburse upon certificate of occupancy. Phase one, what we're looking at is completing 114th Avenue to Filmer Street, completing Filmer Street east-west from Avondale Boulevard to Park Avenue. And then constructing the Great Law Play Area Stage that would be used for programming and activation to bring in like the yoga and the different kinds of markets and different events. And I'll get to that in a moment, what kind of events that they can produce. Phase two would be Park Avenue Extension to Van Buren Street because this is a two-phased strategy or plan. The total estimate cost is 6.6 million. The total estimate cost is 6.6 million. The public benefits from the development is Blueprint's, as I mentioned, would be activating that space, the Great Lawn, more than 50, with a commitment of more than 50 public events annually. And Blueprint's Capital will commit $2.5 million to produce the events over seven years. The economic impact, more than $5 million in net new Avondale sales tax generated over the next seven years. $9.5 million of net new property taxes over seven years. And the economic impact overall is at $40 million over the next seven years. So this is just a highlight of the Blueprint's Capital, how the phasing approach looks with phase one in purple, which is the restaurant, about 10,000 square feet of restaurant in front of American Sports Center, the office building, and then the lakeside restaurant surrounding it along with the improvements. And then the Great Lawn, you can see in the north or the corner. My direction's eastern corner. And then the blue is the second phase. However, we're getting strong tenant interest. So we might be moving up the phase two sooner than we anticipated because it will be dictated by tenants who commit early on or pre-lease. So that, you might see some of the phasing in tandem. Okay. The timeline. So with a large-scale project like this, multiple parcels, a lot of construction, a lot of development, due diligence, pre-leasing, marketing conditions, all that jazz. We have a preliminary timeline with a purchase agreement execution around early 2026. Site plan design review supplemental mid-2026. All city plan approvals mid-2027. With a closing date on our land, it is a purchase transaction mid-2027 with commencing construction around late 2027. Phase two, again, site plan design review early 2028. All city plan approvals early 2029. Closing early 2029 with commencing construction mid-2029. But I have a feeling all these dates are going to change because we're going to be finding tenants sooner than later. I just, we're already, this economic development team's on fire. Norm's group has done a great job. So we'll come back to you with timing when we solidify a little bit more. And the future of the Boulevard, just again, a bird's eye view of the integration of how we're going to see movement from the Great Lawn and Lakes area into the hard corner and then, and how the parking and streets will flow. So movement's really important. Again, it's very intentional and thoughtful when these developers are coming in, trying to figure out how to best connect the community in this development. Okay, I'm going to play, there's a video. I'm trying to figure out how to, that really reflects and demonstrates the activation at Cooley or at Verdi at Cooley Station. And it's, oh. So that gives you a really good preview of what Norm Brody and his group do. Oh, Emilio's here, also want to introduce. He's part of the team as well. I know most of you know Emilio over here. They really do a great job of activating and programming these events. They also are long-term holders on these properties. So the intent is to be partners for the long range. And we really are excited to be working with them on this project. So at this point, I really want to make sure we're aligned and will appreciate any feedback, thoughts, questions you may have at this time as we start to navigate through the next steps.
Thank you so much, Jen. Great presentation and great information. And before I make my comments, I will look to council to provide theirs. Any members of council wish to provide some feedback? Okay. Councilmember Conde, you too? Okay, all right. Councilmember Conde?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jen, for the presentation and really breaking down how much we've done because it's been done in little bits and pieces. And sometimes I forget, okay, we really did get a lot done. So thank you for that presentation. But I also don't want to lose sight of what we had discussed as a council before this. And it's probably something, you know, we just want to give your input. You know, we wanted to make sure that it was a walkable place, you know, a place where, you know, people can walk to or ride their bikes or roller skate using the trail on Van Buren to go have, you know, a brunch in the morning. And that was kind of the vision of that. So I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that and making sure that, you know, we have that retail there for folks to be able to grab some dinner, go do some shopping. And having that sports complex is huge. I know my daughter goes there. And when there's tournaments, I know families oftentimes maybe want to go grab a bite to eat while they're waiting for their next game or, you know, go enjoy a beer or whatever or shopping. So I think the vision is still there, but I don't want to lose sight, you know, what was important for us when we had this discussion about places for folks to sit, you know, having shade. And of course, parking is so important. But I saw that there was a lot of parking, but I don't want to lose that path, that trail, that connectivity and just an aesthetically pleasing place with trees and shade. Those are just some of the things I don't want to lose. And one thing that I want to mention with Mayor Pineda is back when this was happening, I remember that him and his wife Olivia would go bike riding. And Olivia had mentioned starting a bike club with people getting their bike cruisers out. So those are the things that we envisioned, that I envisioned, is having those types of things available to our community. And, you know, there's so many apartment communities, housing in that area. You know, it's just so nice for folks to not have to jump in the car, you know, just to kind of walk there or pull their kids in a wagon, you know, just to go for a walk there. So, you know, I'm sure we're going to be able to have a little bit of input as things move forward. So we'll kind of have those discussions. But those are just some things I just wanted just to remind, you know, us all of what we had talked about in the past. But I'm really excited that we have someone that's going to take the lead and bring forth some of these great ideas. So thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
I love to eat. I love to shop. I like to go listen to music. And so this seems really good. And I think about sitting for the strategic planning when we did it. And this is exactly kind of like what we spoke about. I love the bike trail and all that stuff. And I think that's mentally, I think that's incorporated because I've been to the one in Chandler and Mesa because they have places to walk and to sit and to eat outside and stuff like that. And I want to make sure that we also attract really good places to eat because just because we have the space doesn't mean we're going to get the type of food that I want to eat specifically, like a really good steak. So I want to make sure that we keep that in mind when selecting the right kind of people into the area because just because we built something doesn't mean the right people are going to be attracted to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Solario?
Jen, Jen, thank you so much for this. Thank you to the Economic Development Department. More importantly than this, I think when I see this, it's so good to see this come to fruition and see the vision out there because I don't know how long ago, maybe Jody remembers, but I was part of her ad hoc committee and seeing this on a whiteboard and seeing this as a slide of what things would look like. Now, yes, some things have changed, but the vision is still there. It's what the residents have been asking for. The folks have bought their homes. I have a family member who owns a home in Madamie. And it's really what they kind of sold him on when he was, it was his first day walking into that community. And they said this would all be built out and walkable. That was one of the things that they sold to, being a gated community and coming and having that accessibility. So to see it, you know, put together in the different phases, so excited for it. As you know, I have worked there for 18 years on that side of the hospitality sector. So to see it grow, it's just amazing. It just like blows you away to see all the different plans and to see that really come together. And it's been many years. I don't know, how many years ago was that, Jody?
We worked on it in 2018 and it was adopted in 2019. So about five years or so.
Yeah. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, everybody, in economic development.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Either of you? Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, Jen, for your presentation and thank you for being here tonight and supporting us in this development. One of the things that I did see was all the shade. And so that is so important for us. There was one section that had a park, it looked like a park.
Yes, the Great Lawn area.
Yeah, and then there's another one kind of south of it.
Yes, there's some additional playground equipment.
So lots of places for people to go walk, sit in the shade, bring their families. And yeah, now I'm sad that I've moved away from there because that's where we live. Now we have to drive down there, but that's okay. Anyway, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for your vision.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I want to make a correction so we don't leave with the wrong impression. Jen, can you back up a couple slides? Right there. So that green lawn to the, what's to the south to the bottom of it, that's not going to be a park. That is currently not our property. It's owned by the developers that own the property just north of that. And so that's going to be originally, I think council contracted for a hotel. The Avid, I think, was going to go there.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the Great Lawn. I apologize.
No, they're talking about the south. That's why I wanted to clarify.
Oh, yeah.
The one on Avondale Boulevard. We put that there because we didn't, we don't know what's going to be there. But it's not city property. And we're, it is owned, Jody, correct me, for hotel. And so, but that's just a placeholder. They're doing offsite improvements on that as we speak. You see the tractor and the digging holes out there, they're right now. But I didn't, I, yeah, I didn't want to leave the impression that that's going to be another park. That will be developed into something.
Through the mayor, Sam Azure, I wanted just to clarify. It has zoning for commercial. Right now, the site plan is approved for a hotel and we're working with Jen's team on what ultimately will come to fruition on that property. But there's options.
Councilmember White?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Jen, for the presentation. Of all of us, I live in the community off of 111th Avenue, right behind that. So I truly did buy my house for this and have waited since 2008, when I made that purchase, to see all of this stuff come to fruition. Thank you for increasing my property value. But when I take a look at this, I will say some things as call-outs. And it definitely have to stick with that walkable community. You have a couple of meat eaters here. So Councilmember Garcia spoke truth to power. We do need like a steakhouse in this area. We don't have a fine dining evening restaurant, especially not that people could walk to. And then we also have had quite a few accidents where we have people on two-wheeled vehicles or bikes, whether they're electric or not. But we want to preserve some spaces for biking and walking in there. I see it done already. And one thing that we maximize in the Boulevard that I hope that we can continue to do with any additional intersections that we have to put in there, we should use traffic circles because we're going to keep it a community-oriented space. The traffic circles that exist there right now make it really smart. The back street that goes behind the sports center, it's one-way, each-way. So if you're on one half of the street, you're, if you're on the south, I'm sorry, the west half of the street, you're going south. If you're on the east half of the street, you're going north. I mean, those type of intelligent design cuts down on accidents and makes people remember that we have a lot of families out there. So I just want to continue to thank those folks. Blueprint, thank you so much for being here. We'll hear the next proposal as well from Whitten during the next item. But we really appreciate you guys investing in Avondale and making our place beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, this, to me, this is the beginning, the spark, if you will, of what's to come for Avondale. Avondale has lagged behind, as mentioned by some council members in different, in different types or in different ways in regards to what we have, what we don't have. But where we're headed with this project, to me, just demonstrates that commitment to our residents of what they not only are looking for, but more importantly, what they deserve as part of their community. And having a center like this, a heart, if you will, to come together, to celebrate whatever milestones they've achieved, more importantly, have a nice meal. What I like and what was mentioned earlier, and I believe by you, is that this is our last, or at least on the Boulevard, that this is an important piece of property. We get one, one shot at this. And what I would assume and I believe is that we're not just slapping fast food restaurants here, no drive-throughs, none of that. Because again, that's what council has been looking for. That's what the residents have been looking for. And this fits the bill. I also just cognizant of the fact that the presentation also included the dollar amount regarding our investment as a city, 6.6 million dollars. And while that is a lot of money, I just also want to communicate that one of the things as being mayor and being out there in the community, specifically speaking on behalf of Avondale's future and progress, is how we lag behind Goodyear in some respects to development like this. And what I often communicate to them is that Goodyear, long ago, prepared and they invested, I believe upwards $30 million into shovel-ready pieces of property so that this, these type of opportunities could come. And we see that those are happening now. If we can do that for a fraction of $30 million to bring something like this to fruition, I think that the residents will see this as not only worth it, but as a true investment and not an expense. And so for that reason, I'm very excited. We can get to the particulars on some of the comments that have been made with council in regards to the walkability factor, which I know is important. I know for me specifically, making sure that restaurants are utilizing the lake as an amenity to me is so important, but we'll get to that. But for tonight, in terms of comments, I think you've heard that the support from council as the direction. I'd like to also thank Blueprint for taking on this opportunity. And we saw what you've done in Gilbert. And we look to Avondale as being another jewel in your portfolio. And so I look forward to future discussions. And I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but I truly believe that you hear the passion behind all council's voices and more importantly, just pushing forward with a project like this. And so thank you, Jen, for your, for your presentation. Thank you for your economic development team. I for one know just how hard you guys work and what you guys are doing to make Avondale a better place for everyone. So thank you so much, and I look forward to future discussions on this project.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just one point to add, we are definitely focusing on diversification of restaurants. I did write that down. But the tenants that we are receiving strong interest are actually in alignment with the resident survey that we did, and we'll probably do another resident survey. So we definitely take that feedback seriously from your constituents who recommend restaurants. And we are actively, and I'd say aggressively, I'm going after them. And I would say, Norm, we've got a couple of really good ones that I can't wait to share. Like which ones? So I just want to make sure you know we are, we are continuing to seek resident input and we heard you on that, that point. And then in terms of next steps, we're going to take all this feedback, collect, collect it, internally discuss, meet, and then start working on agreements with Blueprint's Capital. So we'll be, we'll be back here soon with, with an agreement.
Can't be sooner enough. Thank you so much, thank you so much, Jen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Could we just take like two or three-minute break really quickly?
You're meeting, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Garcia just needs to step out for just a second. Ron, item B, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Up next, I probably ought to read the title and then I'll say what I want to say. But the Boulevard Web Avondale Investments LLC, formerly Whitten Development Inc., Full Service Hotel Presentation Notice of Intent to Enter into Development Tax Incentive Agreement, presented by Jen, your Economic Development Director. But I'm excited about what we're getting ready to present, which is a full-service hotel with convention center space. We're very excited to welcome them to Avondale.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Again, me again. This is really exciting. This is actually, this next project is a great example and outcome of the RFP process that we discussed in the previous presentation. It's definitely going to amplify the Boulevard. And so we are thrilled to bring this project forward. I already introduced you, but again, I just want to point out, Tim and Ty, Ty Whitten with Whitten Development, our partner on this incredible full-service, 180-room hotel, conference center, six stories high with 10,000 square feet of conference, over 10,000 square feet of conference and meeting space. Just to get oriented, this is going to locate just north of the parking garage off of Roosevelt Street. And again, full-service amenities, restaurant, room service. And we're very excited about the rooftop bar. the rooftop bar. It's beautiful. It's definitely elevates the profile of the boulevard with incredible views of Astoria Mountains. It's position, positions Avondale within the boulevard as a premier destination. This is important because it puts us also in a competitive position to attract some of those shows, conferences, events, trade expos, that you're seeing go to other resorts or conference space in the area. Now we have that opportunity to capture that business. And with our tourism manager, Nikki Taylor, Nikki behind me, wave your hand, I don't know, Nikki's way in the back, she gets so many leads, hundreds of leads, that now she gets to work on placing at the new Embassy Suites. All right, and last but not least, it's really good to have a successful partner. The Wittens have done a really great job in this hotel sector space and have delivered incredible product, so we are looking forward to working with the Wittens. Okay, so why are we here tonight? There's a couple of things, there's a couple of sequence of events and phasing I want to discuss. The first process is a two-step process where we, when we bring a development agreement forward to council, per state law, we do have to issue a notice of intent. So tonight, you will be taking action on a motion recommended for the notice of intent. So pursuant to state law, before the city can enter into an economic development tax incentive agreement, the city is required to adopt a notice of intent. The NOI must be adopted at least 14 days before approving the agreement, so we will come back in two weeks with the development agreement and the lease to purchase. The NOI must include two findings. The proposed tax incentive is anticipated to raise more revenue than the amount of the incentive within the duration of the agreement. In the absence of the tax incentive, the retail business would not have located in the city in the same ti, same time, place, and manner. This statute requires the findings to be verified by an independent third party, and we did hire Rounds Consulting to conduct the third-party economic impact analysis. And so that study has been provided to you, and it also is attached to the notice of intent for adoption. Okay, so there are three timeline milestones, again, with following the sequence of events, with November 3rd being the adoption of lease of purchase and development agreement, or the action to be brought forward. And then while between now and January, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes pre-development, pre-planning, due diligence, that is typical activity that occurs when we're in a, in agreement like this and preparing for development. In January, we have two outside dates. January 31st, the site plan design review submittal is due. However, just like the other project, we're rocking and rolling over here. So this most likely will come into the city prior to January, but again, for the agreement purposes, we did set a couple outside dates to keep everybody on track. But Tim would say, and if you have any questions, he could definitely join later, that he's ready to roll, ready to go. He's up, we're already moving, moving fast. November, all city plan approvals and lease would commence because that's when construction will begin, and that's when we will activate and make the rent or the lease agreement effective. So to walk you through the scope and timeline, this is a 7.5-year lease to purchase. Phase one, in that first 18 months between November and April 30th, we're at $1, because that is like the construction, dirt's moving, we're getting it ready, we're not operational yet, so construction. Phase two, for three years, between May 2028 and April of 2031, now they're operational. They'll have a certificate of occupancy, they'll have the option to purchase, and they're in a rent of $120,000 a year. And then they have phase three, if they have not yet exercised their purchase option, from May 1st to 2031 to April 30th to 2033, then it goes up, which is, these are market rates adjust, adjust to $180,000 a year. There's a one-year lease extension option between May of 2033 and April 2034 that is escalated to $198,000 a year. But the agreement and the terms that we have negotiated and are committing to is that the developer will purchase this property within the seven-and-a-half-year lease at $18.75 a square foot, which is estimated to be $2.9 million. It's estimated 2.9 million because we're still finalizing the, the site plans and the surveying and the legal description that will give us the exact square footage. Okay, so by the numbers, this is a $115 million valuation project at completion. We anticipate $12.2 million of direct revenue to the city of Avondale over 10 years, and this again came from the economic impact analysis by the Rounds Consulting Group, 12.2 million. One-to-nine ratio means that for every $1 in the city obligations, Avondale taxpayers will receive over $9 in benefits. So we're going to break down city contributions and then public benefits. On the city contribution side, we're looking at reduced, reduced building fees, about a 50% reduction in development, review, and permit fees. Another is the development impact fee cap, 50% in lieu for impact fees. This does exclude water and sewer, not to exceed $400,000. Construction sales tax reimbursements, only on the unrestricted city construction sales tax, which is at 1%, is the unrestricted, not to exceed $200,000. And then the lodging tax reimbursements, as they're scaling up and going operational. The 2% hotel tax or bed tax, as you might have heard, is in addition to the existing sales tax that's on the room already, which is 2.5%. So this is the 2% on top. We're looking at years one, two, three, 100%, which is estimated at $536,000 in reimbursement, and then the conclusion in year four and five at 50%, which is $178,000 estimated reimbursement. The total estimated city contributions, 1.3 million. Here are the public benefits. Annual access to the conference center. The city will have up to 30 free event, free event days per year in the conference space. So for example, Mayor Stateless City or workshops or meetings, this also could be assigned to strategic partners as well, like the Chamber or G-PAC. Estimated value over five years is $750,000. Conference center discounted rentals, this also is being offered, so 30% discount for Avondale businesses and nonprofits for the conference center space. The 30% discount for Avondale businesses and nonprofits estimated over five years is $150,000. Then we are looking at a 20% discount for Avondale residents, booking private events in the conference space, an estimated value over five years at $250,000. In addition, there are opportunities for branding and marketing, which is really important because city branding and visitor information will be integrated into the conference center foyer. We also have the option to place our Discover Avondale video on the televisions. You know, when you walk in the hotel room and the TV's on, surprise, it'll be us, Avondale. So in-room digital advertising valued at $50,000 a year for five years is $250,000. So that, that's, that's really exciting to us. Hotel providing 300 square feet of prominent retail space for the sale of Avondale branded merchandise, valued at $6,000 a year. So you know we like our merch here, so all the shirts and pins and hats would be part of this retail space, and over five years, that's $30,000. So the total estimated direct public benefits is 1.4 million. All right, why does this project matter? It absolutely, like I mentioned earlier, and of course, as we're talking about building out the boulevard with all the integration and assets and elevating our profile and attracting more people, we already have so many visitors and with the American Sports Center and the ancillary events happening in our city, as well as a lot of, you know, employment around, the density we have, it just made sense for a full-service hotel because it will strengthen us as a regional destination. It will deliver long-term community and economic benefits, and it enhances Avondale's visitor and business attraction efforts. This is really a big part of our tourism strategy and initiatives to diversify our hotel product and offer higher quality amenity. Okay, so I have mentioned this before, economic development is a team sport. There is no way that one person could bring a project of this magnitude to fruition. So I want to take a moment and acknowledge some people in my, in a, in just a quick shout-out thank you session. First, my assistant director, Cheryl Covert. Cheryl has worked incredibly hard on this deal, can't even express how many hours, all the behind-the-scenes magic. I want to thank so much for Cheryl. Nikki Taylor in the back, big shout-out to Nikki, who brought this amazing opportunity forward to us. She's our tourism manager, but she also got business attraction when I came on board, so she has a twofer. And she's doing great, doing both the tourism side and the business attraction, so we're very thankful. I also want to give a shout-out to Nicole and Mary Grace and the city attorney's office because they spend so much time working on these agreements, so thank you, city attorney's office. Jody Novak, Jody and her team are incredible. This is now a gift from me to you, Jody. It goes into her shop next, and we're very grateful for all, all of her team's effort, and, and she's been already helping us problem-solve and get this in motion. Kim Moon, big, big hands for Kim and her team. She's already out there today with the Wittens and looking at the half, half-street improvement. So thank you, Kim, as well as city manager's office, their incredible support and helping us problems solve. Ron, Katie, Dale, Tracy. And Tim, Lisa's not here tonight, Ty, we are so grateful for your partnership. Thank you so much. We can't wait to work with you and deliver this incredible product, so thank you. And Mayor, council, a tremendous thanks to you for all your support and vision. All right, with that said, let's move on to next steps. October 20th, tonight, we are going to put the motion forward for the adoption of the notice of intent. November 3rd, we're looking at the action, bringing, or action on lease to purchase agreement, as well as the development agreement, they will go together. And then tonight, I will read the recommended motion, and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and I can also bring up Tim to answer questions as well. But the motion, the recommended motion is to adopt a notice of intent to enter into an economic development agreement that includes the rebuild, rebate of sales tax with Web Avondale Investments LLC for a proposed full-service Embassy Suites Hotel, and authorize the mayor or city manager, city attorney, and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, Councilmember Solario, okay, comments?
Jen, thank you again for bringing, and everybody in economic development for bringing a product, a service as good as this. I know I had a brief minute to share with the gentlemen, as a 18-year hotel veteran who has worked in this industry, to be able to see a project like this, because we do not have an Embassy Suites on this side of the valley, that, you know, as I shared with Jen and I've shared with other people and people in the council as well, we see those sales leads come in for all those big-name retailers, and we have to turn them away because they have to go to Phoenix. But a product like this brings those people here and brings jobs to Avondale, and I couldn't be more excited, the hotelier and the Hilton person in me, to have an Embassy Suites.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you for the presentation. It is so refreshing to have something new in Avondale. When I worked in North Scottsdale at a business, when we were looking at conferences areas, there was nothing in the West Valley but Wigwam and the, and the, what is it, the one at Westgate?
Renaissance.
The Renaissance. And it's now people will be coming here with their conferences, with their balls, with their galas and everything, and this looks way prettier than the other ones, so I'm very excited. Hopefully it looks just like the pictures, but it's going to bring in a lot of revenue and as well, it's, it's going to bring those people, just like Councilmember Solario said, it's going to attract a lot of businesses to come over here. So thank you guys so much for doing this.
Thank you.
Jen, again, knocked it out of the park. I mean, at the end of the day, Councilmember Garcia just said it, that, you know, this pretty puts us on the map. If we're looking at the region as a whole, Wigwam, Renaissance, things of that nature is where you would host these facilities, what I really like is the focus back on the community and the win that we earn, that they earn as a result of discounted rates or even the use, maybe as part of that 30 event opportunities that we have. And so to be able to share that back with the community, I think, is, is wonderful. So I appreciate it. And even before you finished, we had a couple of motions come up, so let's just go ahead and, and get this done. We got a motion from Councilmember White, a second from Councilmember Solario. Can we please vote? Okay, item passes. Congratulations and thank you all for investing in Avondale. Ron, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Up next, you're going to hear from Brian, our homeless services manager, presenting the Avondale Strategic Plan for Homelessness.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm excited to be here today to, to bring you our final plan to address homelessness in the city of Avondale. I'll begin with a concise background and then the plan's guiding principles. I'll define the outcomes that we will track, and for each outcome, I will show the specific strategies that move it. I'll close with our next steps and ask council for approval of the strategic plan, homelessness resolution, the strategic plan for homelessness resolution. Just as a reminder before we start, the city's goal is always to make the experience of homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring in the city of Avondale. First, I'd like to share the context of our work at this point. Since 2022, Sonar has engaged 329 individuals through 7,343 unique engagements. This reflects a sustained outreach, follow-up, and casework across the city. From those engagements, we have had 179 individuals positively exit and their homelessness. These figures establish the baseline for how Sonar has operated to date and frame the scale of the work that is addressed in our plan. Of the 179 exits, 36% of those were to permanent housing, meaning affordable housing with supports. 34% went to shelter, continuing on their journey to end their homelessness. 12% went to temporary housing, and 18% went to treatment to continue their journey to end their homelessness. The strategic plan builds on this foundation by organizing how we apply proven practices, aligning resources behind methods our team already executes, and codifying reporting so that our progress is visible to you and our community. It reflects the city's investment and the team's expertise and sets the course to resolve homelessness through a coordinated and strategic system. When we were working on the plan, we set a vision for our team. That vision states that the, states where the destination is, that every resident, that every resident safely and healthily is housed with a fair chance to thrive, that Avondale is a community where everyone has a safe, healthy place to call home with equitable opportunities for prosperity, well-being, and happiness. The guiding principles function as the decision rules across our program, contracts, and communication. A place called home keeps housing solutions central. You can't end homelessness without a house. This principle defines home as the precondition for health and stability and is not an optional support. Everyone deserves and benefits from a place called home. People First defines our service conduct, how staff, contractors, and partners interact with residents experiencing homelessness by acknowledging the universality of the risk. Homelessness can happen to anyone. This calls on us to deliver services with truthful communication, reliable follow-through, persistent engagement, and consistent standards across our techniques. It's a conduct standard for every interaction and relationship within the system. That stewardship starts with us. This principle directs us to treat public resources as a trust. Decisions must be evidence-based, transparent, and performance must be measured with data. In practice, that means collecting and analyzing data to show collective impact across partners and publishing what we track so that you and our residents can see our progress. The plan names the tools for this transparency, a public-facing dashboard, regular utilization of a regional homeless information management system, policy updates, demographic reporting, and coordinated integration of the AVIWise system. Responsible storytellers, this principle commits the city to elevate first-person first stories as we, as part of how we lead the work. The goal here is influence, to deepen public understanding of the causes and hardships, surface resilience, and point to the supports required to overcome barriers so that the community backs the strategies in this plan. Sonar's role in honoring and sharing these stories is explicit. These five outcomes are listed together in the plan's overview of strategic outcomes section and define how progress will be judged over time. To achieve these outcomes, the plan organizes the city's work into six goals. I'll briefly talk about the outcomes. We are looking at accomplishing a 25% increase in the number of positive, positive exits from homelessness, I defined those earlier, a 30% increase in the number of connections to treatment, 50% increase in the number of family connections to permanent housing, families are defined as any unit with one adult and at least one minor child, and a 50% expansion in the number of supportive service partnerships, bringing more. And a 50% expansion in the number of supportive service partnerships, bringing more services to Avondale and the West Valley to ensure that people who are housed stay housed. And then ultimately a 25% reduction in the number of people experiencing homelessness at any given time. Goal number one is to ensure sufficient housing. This is a supply question. This aligns housing pipeline to what Avondale actually needs. The plan calls for preserving affordability through home repair, supporting, supporting affordable and supportive production with community housing development organizations and housing authorities, partners, and pursuing population focused options such as veteran housing where feasible. The emphasis on, is on meeting current and projected needs for all residents so that exits are possible when people are ready to lease. We can't put somebody in a home if that home is not available. In practice, this goal underpins reductions in overall homelessness and improves family placements by ensuring appropriate units exist. Goal number two is to provide support to prevent eviction. This is a prevention goal. The goal interrupts housing loss before it becomes homelessness and the plan identifies, directs the city to identify and strengthen existing funds, partnerships for emergency assistance, eviction prevention and housing related legal assistance. It also names landlords as a central and essential partner and calls for structured engagement and education. The intent here is straightforward, keep households housed so that entries into the system are rare and brief. Goal number three, facilitate connection to temporary shelter. This is about speed and about time. The plan calls for local low barrier options such as family bridge housing and I help to give outreach a reliable destination the same day or as quickly as possible. With predictable referrals and documentation, with predictable referrals, navigation and documentation can begin earlier. That shortens the path to lease up. This measure is practical, less time waiting, more people moving through permanent housing. Number four is to refine the citywide response. This goal is about consistency. It's about doing the same effective thing every time and showing our results. Standard response expectations and encampment protocols reduce variability and hasten solutions. Diversion options route eligible cases out of the homelessness and justice system pipeline. And the data upgrades, such as a public facing dashboard, HMIS policy, demographic reporting and AVIYS integration, make the system's performance public and easier to manage. Consistency improves flow and reduces those repeat episodes of homelessness. Goal number five is to expand supportive services. This is about access. The goal grows service network where it affects housing results. The plan focuses on partnerships in behavioral health and transportation and in workforce so that people can access services that meet both personal and financial needs. By formalizing this partnership and aligning them to identified gaps, the city strengthens the supports that make placements possible and sustainable. The result is more verified connections to treatment and service network that is better able to support positive exits. And finally, number six, connection to permanent housing. This goal is about stability. The goal carries people from temporary programs into permanent homes with the right supports. The plan expands case management for families and individuals and integrates workforce readiness, financial literacy, transportation, childcare planning, life skills, benefits access, basically how to make a home and keep it stable. It positions these functions as part of the housing pathway, not as add ons. This is central to ending homelessness. The intended effect is higher exits to permanent housing and fewer returns. We know that the only predictor of homelessness is a past experience of homelessness and this will lead to better outcomes for families. Upon approval, the neighborhood and family services department through the homeless services division will implement the strategies as written in the plan. We will track progress against the five outcomes, altering them as we meet those successes, setting new outcomes and providing regular updates to this council and to the community. Mayor, member of council, on behalf of the staff, I respectfully request your approval of the strategic plan for homelessness resolution as presented. Approval adopts the plan's outcomes and goals as the city's framework and authorizes staff to move forward with implementation and public reporting consistent with the document. On the screen before you is the staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution, to adopt a resolution on adopting the strategic five year plan for homelessness. And before I close and before you, I ask for your approval, I'd like to thank you for your investment and your intention and your attention and steady support that has strengthened my work and the work of our community. Every step you have affirmed our staff's work, our partners' work and the neighbor, and we are able to stand with our neighbors in Avondale. Our plan has a shared commitment to turn that support into visible progress, fewer people losing housing, more families returning home and a city where every resident is treated equally and with dignity. We honor your trust by doing the work openly, measuring what matters and staying focused on what, on outcomes for all Avondailers. Thank you. I'll take questions.
Have questions or comments? Council member Condi?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, thank you, thank you guys, thank you neighborhood and family services. You know, since I got on council, that was one thing back in 2017 that we knew that that was happening, you know, the unsheltered population, you know, down in our river bottoms. And, you know, Chris, you and your team just really took the lead in creating this sonar and bringing Brian on. And I couldn't be more thrilled about the work that you guys are doing. And one thing that I always just share people with people is that you treat them with dignity and that makes a big difference. So I want to thank you for all your successes and thank you for, you know, coming along when someone invites me, you know, Family Promise did their ribbon cutting and
Happy to be there.
You know, but that's a great way for us to make connections because at those places we're meeting people that have housing to help people that are battling substance abuse, right? It's not a big organization, but it's a small house. So really being out there connecting and networking, finding those additional resources is so important. So thank you for always for coming and supporting when I go. Another thing, I, under the goals, there was landlord outreach and education. So is that something new? Is this the first time that we're starting this?
It hasn't been a strategic response. So the plan calls on us to engage landlords. So the team, we have a small but mighty team. There are five of us along with the rest of neighborhood and family services. A big piece of placing someone is that negotiation with landlords. Oftentimes families are coming in with services and guarantees to pay. So it's educating landlords on what that system looks like, but also building a team of partners in those landlords so that we have a place to place families and we have identified units and strategic partners that, that you can't house somebody without housing. So it's, it is education that's happening in other cities, other part of the country. So we're looking to replicate that in Avondale.
I know one thing being my background in property management, when I used to work at a, with a specific company, we provided all of our property managed, the apartment communities themselves is a list of resources. So before we send out a five day or when we send out a five day notice, these are a list of places that they can go to get assistance, whether it be Salvation Army or where to be surrounding churches. So those, those have, the apartment committees have to have buy in as well. You know, so we want to try to keep those folks in, in their house because once it's a five day, once it goes to court, all those fees start accruing. And then now they're owing $500 or $600 in addition to their rent. So really trying to avoid that. So, you know, thank you for educating, thank you for connecting with the landlord because that's an important, important piece, you know, because we want to definitely try to keep folks in those apartments if we can.
And it's important to note that we, being housed in neighborhood and family services, we sit with the cap team and their job every day is to help families avoid that eviction process. So we have a built in partner with those relationships that exist and we also have funds to help, to help assist those families. So if we get the name of a willing landlord or a willing property manager, we, we call them until their phone's ringing off the hook to get families placed there because we know that we can work with them. So it's a very important part of the puzzle.
Well, thank you for the great work that you guys are doing. Keep it up.
Thank you for your support.
Council member White?
Thank you so much, Brian, for the presentation. I wanted to take a look, I'm reviewing the slide on the sonar success and it looks like over 54% of the people that we interacted with positively exited homelessness. So that's really commendable that we can get half of the people off of the street in Avondale. That's something to really celebrate. So to you, Chris, the entire sonar team, I really appreciate everything that you're doing there. Because we're just not as learned as you all are with the 7,343 engagements, talk to me a little bit about, or can you give us a real bird's eye view of what does each engagement look like? Cause it seems like a lot of touch points for a few people.
Yeah, so when we talk about, thank you, council member White, for your comments. One of the things that we talk about when we do this work, we don't always have a home identified when we start engaging with people. So the only resource that we have is time. So we direct the team to invest time. So there's, those engagements look less like an outcome for a service contact, but it is time building trust to get to know somebody's story. It is consistency over time. So that, that number is large, not just because it takes that much time to, to move somebody out of homelessness, because it takes that much time for humans to develop trust with each other, especially when somebody has been disconnected from services or had trauma impacts that brought them to the point of homelessness. So that number really reflects the investment of time that the team puts into individuals to learn them, to, to, to gain their trust and to really have that follow through.
I appreciate that. 18% of those folks that we were able to serve went into treatment. How are we able to monitor their outcomes to make sure they did not go back into homelessness?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the data points that's not on that, that outcome is the return. So we, we oftentimes it takes several, so going along with that engagement number, oftentimes it takes several encounters or several experiences before we can get somebody to a point where they're trusting the system or they are connected with the right treatment provider. So oftentimes we don't know if somebody goes to treatment, especially if they go to treatment outside of Avondale or outside of the state, often we don't know. And that's one of the, you know, one of the things that we cope with as a team to invest all of this time into somebody and get them to someplace. And it's like letting a bird fly out of the nest, the baby bird out of the nest. So oftentimes we don't know. We do know when they touch the system someplace else in Maricopa County, we can see that and we have reports that do that. And then one of the numbers we're trying to impact is if we connect somebody with the right treatment, they can work on their housing from there and they don't return. So we're trying to reduce the risk of returning back to homelessness. So that number, we've had great success. There's a member of our team, Adam, who has been remarkable using his own experience to be able to get people into treatment and really connecting with people. Again, that's a question of the time and trust.
Well, you definitely have my support for the strategic five year plan and all the work that you do to remedy the unhoused population here in Avondale. Thank you.
Other members of council? Thank you, Brian, again for this report. Interesting parallel between the discussion tonight in regards to investment of, of taxpayer funding to bring, you know, these beautiful amenities to the city of Avondale. But it's also, we can't forget the investment that we've made also to, to fight this challenge that exists in regards to homelessness and other things. And one of the things that I also would like to call out is, and I think council member Condi alluded to it in regards to resources, is just how much your team, Chris's team, this department as a whole utilizes so many grant opportunities and partnerships that don't necessarily require us to dig into our own pockets to make some of these things come to fruition. And the last comment that I'll make is that I love the strategic plan. I approve of how it looks, but I also want to be transparent and communicate to you that while these strategies are laid out and are nice and clean and they lead to nice goals and objectives, that I also, just as I would with economic development in regards to being aggressive, is it, is to try in terms of being innovative and creative on other strategies, they may not have a nice, clean goal or objective tied to it. It's okay to swing the bat and miss. And so if, if in addition to the strategic plan, utilizing staff and your expertise in this area allows for you to try different things, I hope that you and the team will go for it. Because again, I want to make sure that we do have this balanced approach between, you know, celebrating successes of beautiful development, but also doing what we can to, to fight off these sorts of challenges that we experience or that, that individuals are finding here in our part of town and in the Southwest Valley region. So, that's all I have to offer.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, Mr. Mayor and council member White, I want to just point out, because I think it gets lost sometimes when you looked for what is the engagement looks like, what do those contexts look like? Each month, we do a monthly stat report throughout the city on lots of pages. I think it's 10 pages, super long. The last page, the last bullet is always a story on a homeless interaction that the sonar team has had, usually a success story, whether it's a three to five year contact that we finally got a home for the individual or, or a veteran, we were able to finally get through and make a connection. So, so look for those little nuggets of good stories that happen at the end. In addition, Mr. Mayor, speaking of other strategies, your leadership team meets twice a month and we work with the police department, the fire department, the public works department, code enforcement and many others to address issues related to homelessness and other issues in the city. And we're, we don't miss a whole lot, but we do take lots of swings at trying to address the issues in the city. But Brian and Chris, an important part of those meetings and teams as we try to address those less fortunate in our city.
I appreciate that. And more importantly, I appreciate the communication being provided here tonight because again, you know, as clean and as neat as these things are, I know that there may be somebody in any department, they may be coming up with something that doesn't necessarily apply to the strategic plan, but I would hate for it to be missed if it could, you know, be of benefit to the community. So thanks for sharing that and I'm, and I have no doubt that that's exactly what's occurring.
We do not do this work alone, right, Ron? So thank you sir for letting us know. I just get to give the presentation, but it is, there's an entire city and Ron's team behind us, encouraging us to make those stretches.
Well, appreciate it. We have a motion from council member Solario, a second from council member White. If the rest of council can vote. Okay, item passes. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor and council, up next, we'll hear from Andy, your HR director regarding the midyear public safety salary adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is for council to consider a request to implement changes to the salary step plans for police officers and sergeants, transition lieutenants and fire battalion chiefs from a traditional market range to a step plan and add two additional full time lieutenant positions. The first portion of my presentation will cover officers and sergeants. And as I begin, I want to provide a little bit of historical context for how we arrived at the current pay structure for both of these roles. So in November 2022, council approved the following changes to ensure market competitiveness with an effective date of January 1st, 2023. For officers, we reduced the officer step plan structure from 16 steps to nine steps. We removed the training step from the step plan and we implemented a progression of 5% between each step. For sergeants, we reduced the sergeant's step plan structure from 10 steps to six steps. We implemented a progression of 5% between steps and we ensured there was no overlap between officer and sergeant pay. Since implementing these changes, officers and sergeants have seen cost of living adjustments each year, like other employees, to ensure the step plan structure keeps pace with inflation. Additionally, those eligible received one step movements within the scale unless they were at the top of their range. In preparation for fiscal year 25, it was noticed that the police recruit rate was lagging our West Valley market competitors. Therefore, a decision was made at that time to collapse both the recruit and step one rates to ensure market competitiveness at the entry level rate without impacting the step structure, especially since the remainder of the plan at that time was still competitive. What this meant is that the hiring rate for recruit matched the step one rate. So essentially recruits that were receiving a higher rate upon hire without waiting for academy, were able to receive a higher rate upon hire without waiting for academy graduation date to be bumped up to the higher rate. That helped us in recruiting applicants, especially when we have a lot of other agencies in the West Valley that are vying for the same individuals. That just allowed us to ensure that we were competitive with those rates and they weren't sidestepping Avondale to go apply for another agency. Council will also recall that HR engaged with a third party consultant to conduct a citywide compensation study in FY25, which also included officers and sergeants as part of that review. So at the conclusion of the study, our general compensation philosophy was to focus on those job titles that came back at 5% or more below the average market midpoint to identify for market adjustments. When drilling down a little bit further on officers and sergeants, we determined that officers were lacking the market midpoint average by roughly 2%. So therefore there was no change required based on the market data and this is the city's compensation philosophy. What we did see is that sergeants were lagging the market midpoint average by a little over 5%. Therefore, a 5% market adjustment was applied to the step plan structure for FY26 to support market competitiveness. Market adjustments were implemented in July of 2025, along with COLA increases and eligible step movements. As you can see, our turnover trends have been moving in the right direction for officers since we began to implement changes to the step plan structure over the last few years. So much so that I'm happy to report that we currently have zero officer vacancies as of tonight, based on offers that have been accepted. I believe the, the last group of, of officers started today and I believe we have a couple more this week. So when this presentation was developed, we had start dates pending, but they have since accepted positions. We do have two authorized over hires remaining open, so we'll continue with our efforts in recruitment and retention to make sure that we have a suitable pipeline ready for any future vacancies that may come available. Just one, one point of note in reference to sergeants, the percentages, when you look at the turnover rates seem relatively high, however, the turnover rates, seem relatively high. However, the turnover rates are primarily associated with retirements in that particular category. Given recruitment indicators and movement in the West Valley law enforcement market, at the beginning of this fiscal year, there was sufficient justification for us to explore a market survey of our West Valley comparators to ensure that the momentum that we've gained isn't negatively impacted by not keeping pace with our comparator agencies. So therefore, HR conducted a market survey of our West Valley competitor agency, a comparator agencies in August of this fiscal year. And just to note, our comparator agencies were Buckeye, Glendale, Goodyear, Furia, and Surprise. So before you are the overall market survey results, and the following conclusions were made based on the survey results. So the rate for recruit currently lags the market average by nearly 5%. The minimum for officer currently lags the market average by over 9%, while the midpoint lags the market average by about 5.5%, and the maximum lags the market average by almost 3%. Avondale is the only comparator agency that has a nine-step pay plan. Almost all other agencies have an eight-step pay plan with one agency who has a seven-step pay plan. For sergeants, the minimum for sergeant currently lags the market average by roughly 9%. The midpoint lags the market average by 5.5%, and the maximum lags the market average by a little over 2.5%, so 2.25%. The number of steps within the sergeant's step plan, structure for comparator agencies was mixed. However, six steps was the most common. Therefore, it's reasonable to conclude that our current structure aligns with the market. So two other agencies, in addition to Avondale, had a six-step pay plan, and then it was spread out amongst the remaining three agencies. One was at three steps, one was at four steps, and one was at five steps. So based on the survey data, our recommendation tonight is, with an effective date of January 5th, 2026, align the rate for police recruit with a market average of $34.23 per hour, reduce the number of planned steps from nine to eight, maintain the current 5% progression between each step, and increase pay rates for officers based on the proposed new rate for their current step assignment. The visual in front of you shows what our current step plan is and what the proposed is in, in blue. Budgetary impacts are $1.36 million of on, 1.36 million in ongoing dollars. But for the remainder of this fiscal year, it would be roughly $680,000 for this portion of the recommendation. For sergeants, our recommendation is effective January 5th, 2026, align the step one rate for sergeants with a market average of 55.51 per hour, align the max step of the plan, which is step six, with a market average of 66.76 per hour, realign the progression difference between each step to 3.8%, and increase pay rates for sergeants based on the proposed new rate for their current step assignment. The budgetary impact is $167,000 of ongoing dollars, and for fiscal year 26, it's roughly $83,000 to implement this recommendation. So before I go forward with the next portion, I just wanted to pause here in case there were any questions about officers or sergeants at this point.
Any questions from council this time? Okay, thank you, Andy.
So during our review for officers and sergeants, we also surveyed market data for lieutenants to ensure we understood what impact any potential salary structure movements would have for this group. So to give historical context, the FY25 compensation study determined that the midpoint, the midpoint for lieutenant lagged the market midpoint average of our comparators. So like sergeants, a 5% increase was applied to the market range for FY26 to support market competitiveness. For lieutenants, the survey data indicated that the minimum salary for lieutenant lags the market average by nearly 19%. However, the midpoint only lags the market average by about 3.5%. Avondale currently leads the market average for maximum lieutenant salary by roughly 7.32% and is the highest in the West, of our West Valley comparators. As far as salary structures, some agencies have lieutenants on a step plan, while others have them on a traditional grade assignment. Currently, Avondale has lieutenants assigned to grade 19 on the city's compensation plan, which is highlighted in the table. So you'll see the min, mid, and max of the current salary grade. Based on the survey data, our recommendation is to, effective January 5th, 2026, place lieutenants on a five-step pay plan, use the current salary range midpoint for step one of the pay plan, given how significantly Avondale is lagging the market average for minimum salary, keep the current maximum as step five, top of the pay plan, since Avondale is leading the West, the West Valley market, implement a 4.66 progression between each step, place incumbents in the closest step relative to their current salary. However, they wouldn't go down in salary, it would be the next step that's closest to their current, to their current rate. The budgetary impact is $23,000 of ongoing dollars each year, and for FY26, it would be roughly $12,500. So again, the visual for you is our current grade 19, min, mid, and max for lieutenants, and then our proposed five-step pay plan. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit and talk about staffing within the Patrol Division. So the Patrol Division currently consists of 10 patrol squads, including four lieutenants, 10 sergeants, and 72 officers. The four lieutenants are responsible for patrol coverage, as well as various ancillary duties, including oversight of the FTO program, the traffic unit, Litchfield Park Detail, and the Community Service Officer Program. With only four patrol lieutenants managing both patrol operations and these additional responsibilities, coverage is limited. So as part of this overall recommendation, our recommendation for new positions is, effective January 5th, 2026, authorize the creation of two new full-time lieutenant positions. Budgetary impact would be 300, slightly over 314,000 of ongoing dollars, and for FY26 would be roughly $157,000. So the final portion of my presentation this evening is in reference to fire battalion chiefs. Because fire battalion chiefs are internal comparators to lieutenants, we believed it was appropriate to include this group as part of our market survey to ensure internal equity. So during the FY25 market study, battalion chiefs were tracking below the market average midpoint. So similar to lieutenants, a 5% increase was applied to the market range for FY26. For battalion chiefs, the survey indicated that the minimum salary for battalion chiefs is nearly 10% below the market average, while the current midpoint is slightly above 4% the market average midpoint. The maximum salary is roughly 15% above the market average, which again, similar to lieutenants, we were a leader in the West Valley for the, the max range when compared to our West Valley comparators. As far as salary structures go, again, similar to lieutenants, some agencies have battalion chiefs on a step plan, while others have them on a traditional salary grade. And like lieutenants, battalion chiefs are currently assigned to grade 19, which is highlighted in the table before you. Based on our, on the survey data, our recommendation is to, effective January 5th, 2026, place battalion chiefs on an eight-step pay plan, use the current market minimum average for step one of the pay plan, given how significantly Avondale is lagging the market average for minimum salary, keep the current maximum salary at step eight, since Avondale is leading the West Valley market, and implement a 4.56% progression between each step, and then place incumbents into the closest step relative to their current salary. The budgetary impact is $19,000 of ongoing dollars, and for FY26 would be $9,500. So you might be looking at the two step plans and, and wondering, you know, why not convert it to a, a five-step pay plan? So a couple of considerations were given to this. Based on the tenure of current incumbents, they're placed competitively within the current range. So therefore, being more aggressive with placement isn't necessary in this particular case. Because the maximum of the range is significantly, is significantly leading the West Valley market, we don't need to be as, as aggressive in accelerating movement through that, that step plan in order for them to reach the max of the range sooner. So overall, the approach accounts for current salaries being competitive and taking a conservative approach to movement through the range, again, because we are a leader at the top end of, of the pay scale. So again, here's a visual of the current salary range and proposed step plan. And so overall, just in conclusion, the staff recommends that salary, I'm sorry, that council approved the proposed changes to the Avondale Police Department Salary Step Plan for police officers and sergeants, unauthorized associated pay increases. Two, the transition of lieutenants and fire battalion chiefs to a salary step plan, unauthorized associated pay increases. And three, the creation of two additional full-time lieutenant positions. The recommended effective date for these items is January 5th, 2026, which is the first pay period in calendar year 2026. If approved, it's expected that salary savings will be used to offset costs in this fiscal year. However, if this amount is not sufficient, a future agenda item would be submitted requesting council's authorization to transfer contingency funds. The ongoing costs associated with these recommended changes will be included in the FY27 balanced budget, along with any council-approved COLA and/or merit step increases. At this time, that concludes my, my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from council at this time? Councilmember White?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation, Andy. So just quick math gave me $942,000 that we're going to have to move. Where's that coming from today?
Mayor, Councilmember White, so for today, for FY26, it would come from any salary savings that the city has.
What is the salary savings year-to-date?
I'd have to get information from our financial team. I'm not sure if we had that. I'm not sure how readily available that number is.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember White, last year, we ended up with about $4 million in salary savings. So we're anticipating having plenty to cover. If needed, if the Police Department itself were not to have enough salary savings, then we would come back to council for a contingency, out of your contingency funds, no budget, you know, adjustment upward. It'll, it'll come out of contingency funds, given that it's a mid-year adjustment. If, for next year, it's already included, we've added it to our five-year projection. So when council meets in two weeks, we begin our budget discussions for FY27, and we have these numbers already included in a balanced budget.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to also go back to the step information that we have. So we're shrinking the steps, it looks like, for officers and sergeants to go from nine steps to eight steps. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember White, that would be correct for officers. So going from nine to eight steps for officers, and we're keeping the, the six steps for sergeants.
So just because I'm unlearned in this area, is it, is it traffic, the traffic unit that gets the different elevation, or field training, or CAT, SWAT, the event, the CSO? How do we determine? I, I have no idea how that happens, since I'm not involved in the HR aspect. How do they go from one step? Is it by picking up like an extra affinity that they do, or what?
Mayor, Councilmember White, so the step movement is based upon, it begins once they graduate from the academy and complete probation, they move a step at that point. And then every subsequent year, if there is authorized merit increases or financing for step movements, the officer with a, with a meets expectations performance evaluation would move through that scale each year. So ultimately, an officer who has eight years of service as a sworn officer would then reach the top of that scale.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember White, just to be clear, when the change was made, right before I joined the city, we placed every officer, you guys placed every officer in their years of service. So the year of the step matches their years of service. Mayor, Councilmember White, you asked about cats and all the special assignments. We, sometimes, a lot of those have special assignment pays, and that would be on top of this. This is just the base salary. So that doesn't go into the step plan, it goes into special assignment pay.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Solorio?
Andy, thanks for the presentation. Thank you to you and everyone in your office, because this is deep efforts here to kind of go through different cities, and I know it takes the time. Thank you, Ron, for your input, and some of us, you know, do ask for certain direction. And thank you, Ron, I appreciate that, because I know it's also hard work for your office. And thank you to chief, and thank you to those that are here tonight, because public safety in general, whether it be fire, police, are the ones that are out there. So happy to see this happen.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you so much for the presentation. As somebody who has experienced not being home on holidays, who has given up family events, working weekends, I know that you chose this job, but you're sacrificing for our safety, and you don't deserve this. You deserve so much more. And there is not enough that we could give as a community to you guys for everything you guys do. So thank you guys so much for putting this together and making sure that we are competitive, and that we get the best officers here, and that we retain the best officers in Avondale. Because everyone that I've met here, I was researching two weeks ago for somebody, like, different police departments, and I was kind of sad about, they were like, well, I don't want to go to Avondale because their salary is less. And I was like, but we're the best. And they were like, well, but Goodyear, you know, everything's always compared to Goodyear. So now, being competitive to them and knowing that we have the best available, and we have the best chief, who, he really does stand for his officers, he really advocates for them, I'm really happy this is happening now, and that we're able to have this available for the future officers. Because we just hired, what, I think that class was like 10 new officers that just started today. So hopefully, they stay here and don't leave in about two weeks when we scare them off.
Councilmember Condi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andy, for the presentation. I guess this question would be for City Manager Andy. I know that this increase is supposed to start in January 2026. Is there, would we be able to consider, consider starting it maybe sooner, maybe December, so that way they can enjoy a larger check for the holidays?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Condi, I appreciate your generosity. And they would, yes, they would enjoy it, I guarantee you that. But our budget's in the position right now that this is stretching our capacity to manage the city and do other things for the whole city. You know, we have the vacation sellback program that is citywide, firefighters, public works employees, and those also come out of salary savings. And so we're, we're at capacity for personnel costs. I could not in good faith recommend an earlier date. That was my original plan when we began this discussion. But looking at the numbers, Councilmember White asked a great question about affordability, and, and I, I can look you guys in the eye and say we can afford this. Much more than that, though, would stretch our capacity to continue to not only take care of the Police Department, but all the other wonderful employees here at the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, for the presentation. It's been, a lot of it's already been said here tonight. But, you know, in regards to capacity and the constraints that we have to work under through the budget, I think being competitive, and more importantly, as a council, really, and I use this term twice already tonight in regards to investment, but investing in our public safety and what they bring to our community is important. And so it's, it's, it's of importance to make sure that we are as competitive as we can be here in the West Valley. In addition to that, I do want to commend our Chief Espinoza and Chief Rooney in regards to creating that culture, that environment, as was discussed earlier under unscheduled public appearances, of the analogy of the good, the better, and the best. Not only do we have the best in uniform, but more importantly, the best in leadership. And I just want to make sure that, that we convey that while we are working under those constraints, that we are investing in making sure that we can pay our public safety members what we can, and when we can do a little bit more, that we make sure that we do that, to the, to the degree of which that we're making this decision tonight to make sure that we are competitive, and that paired with the culture that you want to call Avondale a place to call home, as an employer and being a part of the Avondale team. And so I just thank council for, for investing in our public safety, our officers and our firefighters, and City Manager Corbin, for you and your team, and working with Andy and his team to make sure that this is occurring. I'm, I'm very grateful for this. And so, again, thank you for choosing Avondale to call home. And I see that we have a motion from Councilmember Solorio, a second from Councilmember White. The rest of council could please vote. Okay, item passes. Thank you again so much for being here, and thank you for protecting our residents, all the members of public safety. Okay, Ron? Oh, looks like we have summary of current events. Are there any members of council? Okay, Councilmember Solorio?
I had the opportunity to attend the Dreamscape Learning Environment Virtual Reality Lab at Westview High School. They did a ribbon cutting, the Dreamscape program, because you don't know, is a virtual reality program that is done at ASU, and they're starting to bring that type of virtual reality and tying it in with learning at different schools here. Avondale, Westview is the first high school to do it. I did find out today that November 19th is one, is the ribbon cutting for the Dreamscape Lab at Garden Lakes Elementary School. So it is nice to have those things come here. And I was, I received the invitation from Devin Del Palacio, who's very involved in our community. It was so great to be there and saw Stephen Caes and a few of the other people that were there, and just seeing the learning and the amount of just knowledge that kids now have. That's like the computer lab back when I was in school. I mean, it was the computer lab. I mean, it was the computer lab. Now you put on a virtual reality headset and you're like in a whole mind space. So it's great to see.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Garcia?
Well, I attended the Billy Moore Days and let me say how big it's getting, that I couldn't find parking, but I did eventually, but that's a good thing. So thank you guys so much for everything you guys did. I ate at all the vendor things with my son. We got one thing out of everything. That was wonderful. And I also attended the Air Force Ball at Luke Air Force Base. I would love to see Avondale support Luke Air Force Base more. We were the only city not fully represented, but Mayor was also there, so that was really nice. I really loved that we were there and we were being able to see what they're doing and how they are involved in all, all the community is wonderful. So thank you.
Councilmember White?
Thank you so much. I had the opportunity to attend the West Valley Regional Chambers Legislative Breakfast. That was a great time to be there with members of the council. I also participated in Billy Moore Days and later on that Saturday, got super busy as we've kicked off the race weekend celebration. I had the opportunity to support as an accelerator track laps for charity with the Phoenix Raceway Charities. And then later that evening, I attended the sneaker ball hosted by the Phoenix Alphas and Arizona West Valley Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, and we were able to provide $2,500 in funding to the Miracle House to continue their service to veterans and to their children. Thank you.
Just, I attended pretty much every event that was listed up here a second ago, but I just wanted to reference the Luke Air Force Ball. And the reason why I wanted to reference that is I was fortunate, I actually got to sit next to General Berkland and him and I were able to speak a bit about what was referenced earlier regarding the airman that was killed. And I want to make sure that I pass on the message that he provided to me, to our public safety members, which is that you are a top-notch group and that he couldn't believe how quickly that you all, you know, took charge and were able to assist this wife who was in need, who experienced such a tragic event. And as a result, will be moving forward and figuring out a process to deal with a situation and a scenario just like that where unfortunately, there may be a death of a service member and how the Air Force responds and works with other agencies and municipalities in the valley. But he was just so appreciative of all of you, especially those who participated, as well as the, the chiefs, and wanted to make sure that I communicated that back to you. So luckily I have this platform to do that. So thank you so much for coming again. Next item is adjournment. I got a motion for, oops, Councilmember White, a second for Councilmember Condi. Please vote. We are adjourned. Please drive safely home and thank you for being here tonight.